Right. I'm a psycho security application. Got rolled into the. Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm okay. Give me that real hard.
You know what? You're probably. White. So.
I need.
I don't know about your side. Your. On the freedom. Actually. This is one of my dreams. Or a dream.
We'll see.
I don't want to go that fast. No, it's a butterfly box. I have a patchy twist. They use, um, go shady and then twisted. Same.
Yeah.
Now those two took like the right position.
Yeah, they come. They come.
He gave his call back and so order at seven twenty. Yeah, he can answer the consent agenda, right? Okay, we are at item M for a commin motion, consent agenda to approve the regular board reading minutes of June twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, post session minutes of June twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, August expenses and July payroll is an amount of one million, one hundred fifteen thousand, eight hundred twenty five dollars and fifty eight sentence presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by LaShure, second by Ambrose. LaShure?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Teahill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Seahill?
Yes.
Vellows Davis, yes.
We're at item G, communications. Uh, one, we have a FOIA request from, uh, Will Tillman, request a copy of Dr. Erica Millhouse's petticoat superintendent crime contract.
It was fulfilled.
Item two, FOIA request, request from SMART, procure for all, for any and all purchasing records from four, twenty six, twenty three to current.
It was fulfilled.
Item three, FOIA request from NBC Chicago to provide documents which include a request to reconsider ban and or challenge any book and or other material in any of the school districts libraries or classrooms.
That was fulfilled as well.
Thank you. We're at item A, informational items. We have long-term substitute Dr. Brigant Hossen, fifth grade, ELA teacher for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. Uh, long-term substitute Mr. William Wilson, PE teacher, Heritage Middle School for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. We're at item I, board reports, I don't have anything, does anybody know?
No.
No.
Okay. Item J, administrative reports, Dr. Erica Millhouse, petticoat superintendent.
I'm speaking on behalf of Dr. Lori, Lori Orange Stans and myself. Opening day went well. We had the growth mindset, individuals come out to, uh, help our teachers discover their why. We will be working with them for the duration of the school year. I'm also very happy to say that, uh, the parents, I appreciate you. You sent your kids to school, so we hear like a ninety-seven percent attendance rate.
Agreed.
Yeah, it was good. It was really good. So, um, I'm very impressed with that. Opening day, I'm let the principal speak to that, but it was amazing. Our staff was amazing. Um, and I'm just very grateful to the parents for the traffic flow. It, it, it went, it went. It was, it was, it was better than I prepared, but it was, it was good. And I am also grateful for the naked hair parents who did not choke me out because I struggled with kindergarteners on that first day. But overall, it went well, and I'm just very happy for the support that we received.
Thank you. Mr. Trainer?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so we're gonna start off just briefly, we're starting to enter the budget and levy season, and so I just have some informational items that I'm gonna pass out to the school board. Uh, we'll, I'll just kinda go over the packet with you in just a little bit, and then we'll have more details at the, um, uh, budget adoption here in September. Uh, but between now and then, should we have any questions about anything, certainly available to be reached if you I have, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and so just, uh, just really quickly, I just wanna go over this, walk you through these, uh, these are preliminary. Uh, this is just kind of the, uh, the warm-up before the game. Um, but you see on the first page, uh, with the information, just sort of historical financial data, probably done the, the last five years. Um, this last year, we did, uh, have a deficit of one point five million dollars. Uh, when we did the budget adoption last September, uh, it was projected of a one point nine million dollar deficit. So we did better than, uh, expected. Um, basically, as we all know, that we're, we're trying to upgrade these facilities to, uh, these buildings are old, so there's just been some things we were trying to do about these capital projects that was driving the deficit. That's what I'm getting to. So, uh, you see the numbers in the highlight there in the far right column? And then I kind of, uh, spotlighted. And then I kind of, uh, spotlighted, uh, how we've done the other years and, and some of the, the projects that you see along the way that we've been able to accomplish, um, to, to make these facilities what they are. Um, and then last year's recap, just the revenues, um, where they came from, which funds and how much money we got. So we came very close to what was projected, a little bit over. And for expenditures on the next page, again, uh, spent just a little bit more than what was budgeted, but very, very close, uh, within, you know, less than point three percent, uh, so we very, was spot on with what we projected. And, um, and then this, uh, next page with the financial profile score, these are unaudited numbers, but we're still a financial recognition, uh, in state's eyes, which is the highest category that you can get. Um, and then, you know, the question always comes is, well, okay, what are our cash balances? You know, what much money do we have if we head forward to the next year? And so you see on this, um, second to last page, the fund balances, um, that have, uh, we finished the year, um, where it is after was, uh, at fourteen one. And then projected is the last page is tentative budget. Um, kind of we're just, you know, by fund where the expenditures are going, it's a summary of the tentative budget that's out there. Um, and, uh, what we project is revenues. Um, we're still allocating which funds, uh, the, the revenues will go into, but those will become more complete once we get to next month's, uh, budget adoption hearing. So next year, you know, tentatively, we're looking at a potential two point four million dollar deficit. Um, again, capital projects finishing up this year, stuff that will hit this fiscal year. And, um, so, but that's kind of where we're at. And I just wanted you to kind of have a preview of everything and should we have any questions, please let me know. And one, uh, the, let, before I go, I just, I want to say one more thing that, uh, this is the first month that we've had a meeting here in, in this building, uh, since the construction. And again, I just wanna, uh, thank the, um, custodians and the cleaners and, uh, all the staff that have pitched in to help get our facilities up and ready for the start of the opening school day. So excited and, uh, it was a incredibly, uh, very challenging endeavor and, uh, just really so happy that with everyone's help. So, thank you to the staff.
Thank you all. Ms. Julie Engrady, right, go, touch with everyone.
Hello.
Good evening.
We just wanted to say thank you to the community members who helped to support our band school finanza. We had, um, Lansing Mayor Teddy Ida there and we had the Lansing Police Fire Department. PTA had a table, um, we have the Human Resource Coalition, Family Focus, South Suburban, Special Recreation, and we had donations just to Dash and the Gila. It was a great event, good turnout and more to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Mike Allen, technology director?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Shantel Cambridge, Principal, Heritage Middle School.
Good day.
Good night.
All right, so Friday we had our first pep rally, it was our heritage house pep rally, notice the nice decorations behind. Um, we are four houses, one heritage, the fifth graders got a reveal party. And so they were, um, assigned to their new heritage house, which they would, which they'll follow all the way until they're in eighth grade. So we were really excited about that. Open houses are coming up, so fifth and eighth grade has, we have our first open house Wednesday from five to seven, this upcoming Wednesday, uh, August twenty third. And then sixth and seventh grade, we have our open house for them on August thirtieth, same time, five, uh, five to seven, right here and here. We are starting our first fundraiser for the year, World's Find Chocolate order forms are going home tomorrow. We're going a little bit differently, we are asking that, um, they pay for the boxes first and then we'll give them the boxes and order points will be going out tomorrow. One quick thing, Dr. Pettis mentioned, um, the track, the transition is coming back to school. I am asking that all car riders bring their students to the back of the school and, and drop off at door ten. Mostly because the fire department, we've been working with the fire department and the police department, we cannot, we can't block the fire department. They had some problems getting out in the mornings, um, for these types of emergencies. So we're trying to accommodate them. We did do some striking on the, um, asphalt outside, so we have a bus lane and then we have a car lane. Once the buses are gone, the bus students fifth through eighth grade will come through door eight. But everybody else will have to come through door ten, right? Once, once those buses leave, that side door is locked and then everybody else will go around to the door ten. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Joseph Penn, Principal, Naked Hill School.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, first things first, uh, open house for second, hundred and fourth grade is this Thursday, twenty fourth, six, seven PM. And for early childhood, Kevin Carter, first grade on the following Thursday, September seventh, six to seven PM as well. But down to the business at hand. We talked about the first day of school, I gotta tell you, it's the first week of school for us, it was absolutely fan passing all over. And I have to, I certainly shout out to the teachers, certainly a shout out to the students. But I tell you, it has to be a big shout out to our parents. And they are, they are following the traffic pattern, they are cooperating with, let me say that again, with a capital C, cooperating. And the way, and I gotta tell you, this is the first time that before we closed doors from eight thirty to eight forty, we have not had a line of parents out there, we are ahead of schedule, we have had no traffic jam. And that's because parents have been doing their job. The number one thing with that is we have a safer environment for all involved. So great job for our parents.
We are at item K recommend motions, uh, resignation. Wanted to approve the resignation of Mr. Aaron Allen, fifth grade ELA teacher. Was hired at June twenty sixth, twenty twenty four board meeting effective immediately yesterday.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Thompson, second by Ambrose. Thompson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
Ms. LaShaw?
Yes.
Lisa Vellows Davis, yes.
Item two to approve resignation with regret of Ms. Stephanie Rimpis, teacher at Naked Hill School and previously Heritage Middle, Middle School effective immediately.
Motion, second.
Motion by Thompson, second by Terrell. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
Vellows Davis, yes.
Recommend motion for employment to approve employment of Mr. David Carter, full time heritage, day evening custodial position started, salary of eighteen dollars per hour, pending successful background check, results is presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by C Hill, second by Ambrose. C Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Vellows Davis, yes.
To approve the employment of Ms. Esperanza Rodriguez, hard time cleaning Heritage Middle School, salary fifteen dollars per hour. Pending successful background check, results is presented. Motion.
Motion by Ambrose, second by C Hill, right?
Yep.
Ambrose?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
Vellows Davis, yes.
To approve the contract Army Therapeutics Incorporated for therapy service for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year is presented.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, I'll give a motion to LaShaw, second to Ambrose. LaShaw?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Vellows Davis, yes.
To approve the superintendent contract for the, at the conclusion of the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven school year is presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by C Hill, second by Ambrose. C Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
T Hill?
I would like to table it. I would like to talk to her. To approve our contract.
Okay.
Or continue.
At this time, because now they already started voting, won't be able to table it, but you have to put your vote in.
Okay, no.
T Hill, no. Thompson?
I'm staying, only because of verbiage.
And I'm, I'm gonna say that I'm gonna have to vote no. Due to the fact that I asked for a lawyer, they didn't want a lawyer to come. I asked for some figures, don't have the figures, we don't know how much it's really gonna cost the taxpayers. And so with that being said, I'm gonna say no. This is also a, to me, the first thing in which we did when we took this job, it was to protect the district assets. And all I'm saying is that I would have, I felt it would have behooved us as a district to make sure we knew how much the taxpayers would be paying. Thank you. Next.
Did you ask, you ask LaShaw already?
LaShaw, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
So motion here.
And I would like to say, Dr. Pettis does a lot for this school district and has done that over twenty years. Uh, we are presented with financial information every meeting. We have, uh, Mr. Trader available to us at any time.
Well, I will, I will also say that no one is questioning as far as the work and hard work that Dr. Pettis is doing. This is, to me, it's just business, has nothing to do with, I was asking for a lawyer.
And business includes you doing your job to.
Ex- exactly, that's, that's my job to ask for a lawyer.
And your job is also to ask the, the official, the administrators at the school the information that.
And, and, and I did, so.
Okay. Moving on, we move on to the next motion. Motion, recommend motion to approve the organization charter Sunday for school district once everyone is presented. Motion.
Motion by LaShaw, second by Terrell. LaShaw?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
Vellows Davis, yes.
So approve.
Okay, please.
To approve the various capital projects twenty twenty three, change orders in the amount of fifty six thousand, eighty four dollars and ninety nine cent as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by C Hill, second by Ambrose. C Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Vellows Davis, yes.
So approve the intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Lansing Public Library Board of Trustees as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Terrell, second by Ambrose. Terrell?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
Vellows Davis, yes.
To adopt the resolution to refuse to concur with teachers, they released same resignation as presented and it was amended motion on eight eighteen twenty three at eleven AM.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by C Hill, second by Ambrose. C Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Vellows Davis, yes.
To approve the open session minutes of the April eighteenth, twenty twenty three and May ninth, twenty twenty three board meetings of the Echo Executive Board of Directors and the minutes of the May ninth, twenty twenty three public, carrying on public school calendar.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by C Hill, second by Ambrose. C Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Vellows Davis, yes.
So approve the, uh, fiscal year twenty four independent contractor agreements for Echo as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by C Hill, second by Ambrose. C Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Um, T Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Vellows Davis, yes.
Uh, we are at item N visitor's statement. We have anything now? Okay, all right, so, uh, meeting is, uh, motion to, uh, adjourn meeting at seven forty.
Motion.
Second. Second. All my thing.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.